All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good morning and welcome to the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors informal meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Hickman.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Sellers.
Here.
And your OML attorney, Andrew Cummings, is also on the line.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, our first presentation this morning on our formal agenda, informal agenda, is the economic forecast presentation from Mr. Rounds. Jim?
Good morning, everybody. It's good to see you again. Lots of economic stuff to talk about. We'll also be testing my new contacts to see if I can see the detailed numbers on the PowerPoint. But want to go over a number of data points with you, but you know, part of our job is to provide a number of economic statistics throughout the year. I want to tell a little bit of a story, though, about what we see is going on and things that might help you make decisions as you go when you budget for this next year and you do your other economic and strategic planning going forward. But this is primarily just an economic update. There's just a lot going on, so let's get right into it. There we go. We have a slight distance issue. So as we go through this, I think the biggest thing to know or to understand is to what extent has Arizona, the county, and the U.S. recovered from the COVID downturn? And on this slide, the most important statistic on the right in the red box is the bottom. Across the U.S., we have about a 76% recovery rate in terms of jobs. In Arizona, you'll see a little bit later, I think it's around, it's in the mid 90s. And so, much different story about what's happening, but there's also an explanation for it. Some of it is high performance by the state, some of it is some basic fourth-grade math, and I'll go through some of that as well. Keep in mind that whenever you see major fluctuations in something, if it's really extreme on the upward area, then you're going to see something fall off because everything has to come back into balance, and that's what we saw with GDP. But the interesting point of this is it's been growing at a decent rate following that catastrophic quarter that we had and then the strong quarter that followed to get us almost back to where we were before, but not quite. It was about 75% of the way back to where we should have been, but we're still growing at an okay rate. Some of that, though, is pushed up by some of the federal stimulus monies. And that's a really big issue that we have to keep an eye on because when you have so much money flowing into the economy, and a lot of it goes to the states, it ends up propping up your base collections. It's really hard to figure out how much in that base is transitory, how much of it might go away within the next couple of years, and how much would it be for the county? And I have a couple of examples because we did this as part of a tax exercise for the state this last year, and then we tried to convert that model into a county number, just to give you some context on what it would mean. But it was a very challenging issue, and that means that there's extra risk in the forecast. And to maintain that level of confidence that you like, if you keep it constant, that means that sometimes a forecast has to come down a little bit compared to where you were before. But overall, we're not expecting a recession anytime soon, but there could be some of these one-time monies that finally make their way out of the economy. That potentially could be offset by some of the, so a lot of the stimulus package monies went into people's pockets. Not all of it, but that's one thing that we tried to try to figure out, how much of it went into people's pockets and they spent. Now we're going to shift to an infrastructure package. Well, that's going to be investing. It's going to create jobs, and it's a little bit of a different mechanism, though. It's a little bit longer lasting in terms of the economic effects, so it'll be a little less volatile, but some of that could backfill. But if the federal government isn't very, very careful reducing spending back down to where it's a more sustainable level in the next couple of years, if there's a shock, then we could have a major problem. If we keep printing money, we're going to have a longer-term problem. So we have to find that in-between point. The Fed has been doing a good job. I was talking about this this morning a little bit with some folks, and it was, they've been still buying a lot of treasuries, and it comes out to be about $120 billion a month. That's almost the size of a full stimulus package. But they're at the point where they're going to start slowing it down, because we're seeing that inflation pressure impact everybody. And we have a lot of have-and-haves-nots from this extra, from this recession, and then even coming out of it still. And so, there'll be an impact on everybody. But I guess my main point on that little bit of a story is there's going to be volatility, and as much as you study this, there's still going to be some uncertainty. And so, you always just want to be a little bit cautious. And I'm not talking about being cautious, like an economist always says, be cautious. I legitimately, there's a lot of uncertainty. And it was evident even at the state level on some of the advising that we were doing on some tax packages. It's remarkable how people at very high levels of government still struggle with certain things that are important to the budget, and it wasn't so much that they weren't competent. It had to do with the fact that we just don't know. And when you can admit that you don't know, I think you end up being more successful. Leading index of indicators, there's 10 indicators in this. It's still moving up, and what you want to look at is if there's any potential risk, like is there anything that's indicating that the economy is going to be slowing in the raw data excluding this extra stimulus issue? That's still moving up. This, I thought, was a really big deal. In fact, this was probably the best picture. If I had to put in one picture of what summarizes the COVID recession, it'd be this one. So you can see that those that were making less than 40 had almost a 25% drop in employment, and they were the last group to start to catch up. Some of the higher-income groups have already caught up and surpassed it. This was a very different recession for different individuals, which put additional strain on government services. And you would have thought it would have had an additional constraint on economic activity. But again, when you have the ability, the federal government, to be providing a lot of money for us to catch up and invest, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying it's not something that we can keep going long-term. Unemployment insurance continued claims. This is, it's only interesting on the very far right in that we're getting a little bit more back into balance. We have a lot of individuals that have had two things going on. One is that the stimulus money has made it a little bit easier for some to maybe postpone going back to work. But two, and I think this is a legitimate sociology argument, is that going through a downturn like this, it lets people realize, you know, what their priorities are, and you might see a one-person earner in a household if they're making enough, and people cut back a little bit. It's just a different time. Whenever you have something that's severe in economics, or it's long-lasting, it typically changes people's behavior. After the Great Recession, we saw a lot more willingness of people going into multifamily. Now we're just seeing a lot more willingness of people wanting to maybe demand at-home jobs. It's going to put upward pressure on wages. To some extent, that's a good thing if it's based on supply and demand being in balance. When you have labor shortages and you see upward impacts on inflation and wages and materials costs as part of it, then it could decrease economic activity. So right now, the additional costs in the economy will, are not based on, it's not based on economic strength, it's based on economic imbalances. So that'll, that'll get back into balance maybe within a year on this inflation issue. It might even be longer. I think because the producer price index is going up, and all that is, is the inflation for the people that make stuff. That's going up about 50% faster than the inflation rate for people that buy stuff. If you're paying more to make stuff, eventually it goes in to what people pay to buy stuff. So inflation for the consumer is going to have to continue to increase. We haven't hit a peak like a couple of colleagues mentioned. I still think we have a few more months of it escalating. Median sales price across the U.S. for homes, you can see it's still very strong. I'll talk about this a little bit more when we get to the local data. Retail sales, new cars, we had very favorable interest rates. We saw a lot of people not being impacted as much as they were before, and so we had a surge in new car sales that probably would have been forecasted as being much more conservative. I'm guessing that maybe last year at this time, or a little bit before that, you would have had a forecast that had it very depressed based on what you would have expected to have happen, and that's what we would have forecasted as well. It was just very difficult to foresee how much extra money got dumped on the economy. I like this one also. So this gives some context into not only just the short-term severity, but how will it impact the economy longer term? The dash lines are basically the, how long it took to recover after the Great Recession. And when you look at these things, most people refer to the depth of these lines. So how many jobs were lost, or how much income was lost? Well, it's really the area between that 0% line and the curve that represents the pain of the downturn. So the pain from the Great Recession was far worse than the COVID downturn because it was going to be much shorter-lived. And by the end of this calendar year, and this was projected even last year, a little bit before, that we were going to recover our lost jobs by the end of this calendar year, and it looks like we will. All right, so basic math is going to dominate the rankings, and I've had this in a lot of speeches, probably a couple hundred at this point, but it ended up being the best visual I ever gave to some individuals by saying, if you start with a dollar, and I took a buck out of my pocket, and I said, if you start with a dollar and you lose half of that, how much do you have left? 50 cents. So I took 50 cents out, and I said, okay, what does that 50 cents have to grow by to get back to a dollar in percent terms? And a few people said 50%. I said, no, you have to double it. So when you fall far, like we've seen, you have to grow by ridiculous rates of growth just to get back to where you were, even over a slightly extended period of time. So sometimes the percentages will lie to you a little bit, and you have to look at levels. Population growth by state for 2019, I want to give a little bit of historical perspective. So Arizona was number three at 1.78, and number two in 2020. Job growth in 2019, Arizona, number one, and then fell to number five in 2020. So top five, much like we've been saying the last several decades, top five in job growth, population growth, income growth, and state GDP growth. But that doesn't tell the whole story, and you're going to go through a period where you're going to see some statistics that make the state look like it's going to be underperforming. Don't get overly concerned because it's really not going to translate into some catastrophic impact on your revenues. It has to do with this story about what's been happening with some other states. And so, right now, we're at number 17. With all the numbers that you've been seeing, the county being the number-one growth county in the nation, does that seem, and the majority of Arizona, does that seem like that's right? Well, what's been happening? Arizona wasn't impacted as much during the downturn in terms of percent, so it didn't have to grow by some of the strong rates of growth to get back to where we were before. So it's that math function. But also, Arizona and the county started recovering jobs earlier. So if you get knocked down on the mat and you get back up, you're only going to be growing by a little bit, even though your levels are high. And some of these other states, states like in Alabama and in Tennessee, places where people don't really want to go, are all of a sudden going to be high up on the list. But this will stabilize, probably by the end of this year, the beginning of the, actually, probably by the end of this year. You're going to see Arizona and the county statistics jump back up to where they were. So there's a story behind this, a specific story. It doesn't mean things are falling through the floor. Again, it's just that math example. Oh, yeah, I forgot I had this. So Arizona, number eighth in terms of employment losses for COVID, and economic recovery, so the state's at 94%. I think Greater Phoenix and the county are around 97%. So again, full recovery is right around the corner, which will make for a good story because a lot of hard work had to go into that, getting back at least with stable legs after all this terrible stuff happened on the economic side. Let me skip.
Eric, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Clerk?
What's, what's driving Idaho? Did you look into that? I mean, Idaho and Utah seem to be at the top of, you know, the best list. Is that just some population is starting to move there, or what?
Yeah, so Idaho doubled its number of Circle Ks, and it jumped up to number one in the country. It's just a smaller base. Utah is one of our bigger economic development competitors now, so we're doing some work for the border regions on taking a look at how we're performing compared to other competitor metros. And in some cases, we're performing well, in other cases, we're not. But one of our case study items we picked is Salt Lake. In fact, we're doing Austin, Salt Lake, and Denver to do a case study to try to figure out what's going on, and when that gets done, I think it'd be something you'd find interesting. So I'll make sure you all get a copy of that section.
You know, Idaho also, I've just heard stories about some of the California, because it's close enough and the, and the climate, some of California is heading that way instead of this way. Is that, is that a little bit true also with, when you talk about business, businesses, growth?
Yes, and it might not, Idaho might be more limited in its workforce ability to get the really high-wage jobs, but it could attract some that would be supportive of this broader supplier chain from state to state. So that could be some for maybe even some limited manufacturing. But all states are getting more sophisticated in what they do in economic development. Utah has been very aggressive with incentives. Keeping up with my friend Glenn Hammer who left here to go to Austin, there's all sorts of things going on there. They very much incentivize projects more than I would like to see, but they also have a lot of good policies. I think what's great about Arizona and the county is that we can find a good middle ground. We could be focusing on recruiting jobs, but we could also be looking at high return on investment projects related to K-12 and long-term workforce development, or whether or not we want to develop a green tech or environmental tech industry as a subcategory of the tech industry that hasn't been established yet. We have all these opportunities where we have this base that all the leaders, including yourselves, have put down for us to grow. Now I think we can start growing, I don't want to say philosophically or holistically because that makes me sound like I'm wearing Birkenstocks below my shoe, my suit, but it's just thinking about what builds the economy, and so much does. I think that all the conversations that have been separated into government spending and government taxing, really, it's more complicated. If I, if I was getting a PhD in economics at this time in my life, I would probably write about how Art Laffer was partly wrong because it's not a curve. It's more like one of those gravity wells that you see on a science channel where there's like a ball sitting on a trampoline, and it's all curved in different directions. There's dozens and dozens of things that impact economic growth. We just have to get people to think in those terms, which is very difficult, but we're working on that very hard at the state level. We're talking about return on investment a lot more.
Okay.
I'll skip that one because it's hard to see. So this is the equivalent for Arizona and the job loss by income category. And we actually have one that I'll probably put in this for another presentation where it breaks it out by even smaller income group, and the lower the income, the greater the number of lost jobs. But at the same time, this is where we have a lot of vacant jobs, we're having a hard time getting enough people to fill retail positions, tourism, across the board. And I think some of that'll work itself out over the next year. I think wages will go up. They tend to be a little bit sticky on the upside, so I don't think that they'll come down as much, which means prices are going to be higher for a while. Again, there's that argument that if you, if it costs more to make something, then it's going to cost more to buy it if you're a consumer later. But same basic story, we just have a little bit of a ways to go. Unemployment rate, not all that unexpected, much better than we were before. One thing to keep in mind, everybody wonders why Arizona can be a top state in terms of growth, Maricopa County, and you look at the unemployment rate, and it's a little bit higher. If you have a growth state, you have 100 people move here, none of them have jobs, but they're looking. That pushes the unemployment rate up a little bit higher. So you have to, you have to not just compare it to national average, you have to compare it to yourself over time, and that'll give you some context on how you're doing during a downturn or following it. And again, we, I keep this in because we've been asked so many times, well, based on the Great Recession and probably COVID, we're more volatile than the national economy by a wide margin. It's not, actually not true, not even close. It was, the Great Recession was very much based on things that impact the Arizona economy and the county's economy, and it took us a little bit of time to come out of that. But we're, again, we're outperforming the U.S. But we're, again, we're outperforming the US by a nice amount when you look at recovery this time around. Job losses by industry, leisure and hospitality, nearly 150,000, and this is peak to trough. So losses across the board, but it wasn't totally consistent because some are just larger industries than others. But like I said before, with that dollar and that 50 cent slide, leisure and hospitality fell by 150,000. It's probably going to have to post some pretty strong rates of growth, right? Now, it's going to be posting strong rates of growth, which might give the impression that the industry is recovering more quickly than it is, but you have to look at levels again in this particular expansion. And so look at that, leisure and hospitality, still about 30,000 down, but it's leading the other industries. So if you don't see the prior slide and you don't see the 50 cents and dollar slide, sometimes this will paint a different picture. And this is what we see in a lot of reporting, you know, in the different media outlets. They'll take a look at one slide and say, my goodness, what the heck is happening? What did you all do in Maricopa County to maybe have your, going from number one to number seven this next year? Whatever it ends up being. Again, it's basic math, but if you have that story, that's all you need. Per capita personal income, this is, this is my biggest concern about the state, and this is our biggest opportunity. So if you look at the county, what you'd like to see, this is compared to yourself. And so I liken it more to golf, where you can play with somebody that's far better than you or worse, but you're really playing against your last score and your average. So in this case, you want to be close to about where we were before. And our per capita personal income, and this is based on all the adjustments that some folks forget to make, the cost of living, the working age population, all that stuff, it's still fallen quite a bit for the county, and we're around 85 to 90%. But we're going to expect to see, this goes through 2018, the 2019 numbers, I think the preliminary numbers were higher. You're going to start to see this curve back up. But the question is, can we keep it curving up? Because if we can just catch up with the US on per capita personal income, it would be, it would represent a massive increase in terms of GDP, income, job growth, and revenues to the county. But unfortunately, to do something like this, we have to do all hands on deck. We have to have everybody working together, and we have to have the economic development groups start going towards maybe higher wage jobs. I know that we incentivize some projects that maybe aren't as high a wage as they should be. I'm a believer in getting involved in economic development if you're helping the economy and in being very careful with it. But I think we can be smart, and your work with GPEC over the years, and we're very fond of them, they do a tremendous job on all these things backing, backing the county up. I'll skip that one as well. Medium price of homes sold in the county, it looks very much like the US. You've heard some stories about how this is indicating how strong the economy is. I think this is indicating that we have a major economic problem in the county. Housing affordability is a big deal. In fact, I'm hoping that there's a group that's discussing getting together with the League of Cities, maybe we should include the county group, and some others, and trying to figure out what can we be, can be done if we can maybe modernize our regulations related to certain types of product that's being built? What if we can coordinate a little bit more? Going through and trying to figure out the no-cost stuff first, and then figure out where we can get the biggest bang for the buck, the biggest return on investment. But this is something I don't see going away anytime soon, and this could be a major problem. You know, if you have a lot of investment portfolios coming in and buying the homes and renting them, that's fine. But as long as we continue to have population growth and job growth, but our income growth is still modest, and that means that individuals and families are spending more on rent, which they're not spending on other things that might be advancing their own education level, or even worse, they're not being able to spend as much to advance their kids' education level. Because one of the biggest impacts on academic performance is the extent the parents are engaged, and they're trained too on some of the opportunities. Single-family home permits expected to go up, but we're still not at the point where we can get, where we can get by and we can have prices come down a bit. It's still going to be a problem. Housing unit occupancy characteristics, I thought that this was going to diverge more, and so that was actually a finding that it didn't. So we kept it in. I was expecting the renter occupied to be much higher. And you can see that it peaked around in 2016, and then it started coming down a little bit. I'm expecting this to go up a little bit more for renter occupied, and that's just the volume that's being offered right now. All right, this is, this is the good stuff. This is the stuff that matters. The budget numbers and the forecast on the last slide is the most important one for you all. This is probably the next one. Lots of things matter in building the economy. And you have control over some, you don't have control over others. But in somewhere you don't have control, you have influence, or you can monitor what's happening. And so you're in a great position as being county leaders in such a, in a county with such a strong economy, of having an influence on some of these things. So tax rates matter, but they matter if you're either too low or too high, if they're competitive, but you're spending those competitive taxes on staying competitive investment on roads, you're spending, you're competitive on certain education investments, you're competitive on all of these things. Even having a balanced budget is an economic development tool. I think that the thing that might hurt the state a little bit is the inconsistency with what's happening with Prop 208. Because businesses that want to locate in certain areas want some consistency in knowing what the taxes are going to be. And right now, who knows? Even the people that have been working on this, like myself, don't know how this is going to play out. So it could impact business growth just a little bit, but I still feel like we have this momentum going that we should be okay for a while longer. But the key is to find the right balance. Again, you have too high a taxes, then it means that you're going to have reduced economic activity. You got to have to look at return on investment, and this is what we keep pushing on everything. There's no reason, I don't believe that we can operate government like a business, but I think we can bring in the business principles. I think we could look at things like, we have so much money to spend on certain programs. What's the return on investment in the university new economy program? What's the return on investment in something else? What's the return on investment in maybe shifting from guidance counselors with the current skill set, but adding them and maybe having more be professional workforce development officers at the high school level, and then eventually go down to middle school? High ROI, if you do the math on some of these things, because very tiny changes in what you influence on the growth of the economy translates into massive, massive gains in tax revenue. It's shocking how just a minuscule increase in job or income growth can generate another 10% of revenues in just like a 10-year period. Risk of not being aggressive, again, we have to be careful about some higher ed achievement. We're actually, the state's actually last in the nation in terms of those that graduate college at 30% versus 60. We need to change some of these statistics, and some of these are going to be in the GPL document that I mentioned. There's a few sections that you might want to look at, and I'll highlight them so you don't have to read the full report. I'll just highlight a few sections in the executive summary. But it just gives some perspective on, if you run, if you successfully have ever run a business, you know that when you spend money on new computers for staff, if they're a little bit sluggish, you mark that down as an expense, but you don't mark that down as, I just lost profits. You invest in that because your revenues are going to go up by enough that you get a normal return on your investment. Everything the county does, everything the state does should be good, should be done to help better something. The return on investment in some cases could be more social, but in a lot of cases, you can monetize these things, and that could be the decision factor in when you queue certain things that you want to fund. You can come up with a list of 30 ideas, an economic development group, and then they want to reduce it down to a legislative agenda of two or three items. But if you reduce it down based on looking at ROI, and then you talk about where the need is, then you can not only get it down to a more manageable number, I always say less than the number of fingers on your hand, and then you go through and you queue it so you know what one, two, and three are, then you can get more stuff through. But you got to tell the right message. You've always gotten it. It's a little bit more of a struggle with some state lawmakers, but they're getting better in some cases. So we're very resilient, full job recovery by the end of 2021. And where we go from here, it's still, we're still going to see growth. I don't see a recession in the next couple of years at least. You don't want to project a recession farther than that. But what we ended up doing was on the, let me get, let me just get, I'm going on long. See, there's so much fun stuff to talk about, we should have gotten together before this. That wasn't a joke. It was, so state shared revenues for 2022, the one that we were asked to evaluate recently, 3%, close to that for jail, a little bit different for BLT. But here's how we got there. There's three different approaches. We use econometric modeling, so we do the, we nerd it up the best that we can, but you can't forecast everything using an econometric model, you can only pick the turning points. And then that's what we do for a living, we monitor the economy and economic activity, and we have a good feel for where things are going because all these things impact the economy. So we have a general feel. And then you look at some basic trends. But in this case, our baseline was around 5%. The conservative was at 3%. And I know you had a lot of extra money coming in this last year, but think about the stuff that we talked about earlier. There's more downside risk than upside risk in the short term. And that model that we used, where we found, where we calculated the state at a minimum had $500 million in its general fund estimates that were transitory, our upper number was like 800 million or something like that. If we apply that 500 million methodology to the county, this is just very high level, we ended up with about a 2% reduction in the sales tax forecast. So we basically, through a completely different approach, went from five to three using one of the biggest risks that are out there. So I thought it was interesting that no matter how we looked at it, we kept winding up with these numbers, which is a good sign. It doesn't mean that there's no risk, but if you look at things, you know, left to right, forward to back, in different ways, and you get the same result, you feel a little bit better about it. So I feel pretty good about where you stand right now. You're very likely to collect extra money beyond what you're going to want to, you know, reasonably implement for a budget forecast, but that's not a bad thing. But again, these extra monies will go away within a couple of years. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Yeah, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim, great presentation. Thank you for all the information, but it was more than just the information you were helping us to kind, okay, what are we, what should we be thinking about, or how is this relevant to what we do in our jobs? So thanks, thanks for doing that. Seems like one of the big issues when we look at economic growth in Maricopa County, well, really historically, has been how many people are moving here, right? And that's one of the reasons that we had historically slower rates of growth during the teens, right? It was because we had lower rates of people moving into the county. And what I understood, one of the main reasons for that was that people were just underwater in their houses and they couldn't move. So that's gone away now, right? So how much of an impact do you think is that going to have? Are we going to go back more to historical rates of growth, people actually moving to the county? Or do you think we'll stay more in that, kind of the rates that we had in the teens? Any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman, the, the growth in the teens was a little bit dampened still because of just the severity. That was that long chart where it showed how long it took us to get the jobs back. You know, it took like seven years or something like that. I think that we're going to see strong rates of population growth, and it's going to continue for a little while. But what we have to do is match that up with job opportunities and, because otherwise, you can't have an imbalance between job growth and population growth longer term. There has to be some connection. And so if we have job growth, but we focus on maybe higher wage job creation going forward, we focus on the fundamentals that allow for higher wage job creation, I don't, I don't want to sound like the education economist up here, but the most basic principle in economics, going all the way back to actually having to have read some of Adam Smith back in college, it's not the supply and demand, it's increases in productivity, increased quality of life, and it increases incomes and it increases tax revenue. That's productivity increases. How do you do that? Proper deployment of capital and proper education of labor. And so we have to start thinking, we have to build the economy like we're building a business, and there's going to be different departments. Each government entity almost can be seen as a different department. But if, I would love to be in one of your positions one day because you can have an influence and kind of cherry pick those areas that not only influence your district, but influence the county and also influence the state based on your, you know, skill set and the fact that, what I found this last year also, is there wasn't the level of boldness among policymakers and those that run other economic organizations. To me, it weakened the last two or three years. I didn't see as many people banging their fists on podiums. I didn't see as many people getting riled up on certain things. You all have that ability when you need to, and you've had to do it. And so, you know, this is why we've always enjoyed brainstorming with you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Clint.
Jim, and I don't, you know, this issue is supposed to be done at a higher level than what we are. But there are people now wanting us to get engaged in this thing where all of a sudden we become the ground-level people. You know who would be really good to make these decisions? The people closest to the people. And what I'm going to get and broach is the water issue. You listed it on your slide. You know, this valley is on track that if something doesn't happen with the climate, or if something doesn't happen to get water levels up at Lake Mead, we are all going to be suffering the consequences. And, you know, Panal County farmers are already suffering through it, the tier-one water shortage issues and decisions that they have to make. Ever since I've been a little kid, they've continued to pound the drum of, hey, agriculture uses so much water in relation to houses. Now we're inviting a lot of people, but they, but they, people fail to remember that water used in agriculture gets back into the water table. Might take a little bit of time, but the water is put on fields, it matriculates down back into the water table. I'm watching in the West Valley cotton fields being supplanted by manufacturing that uses a lot of water. You have Microsoft, you have Red Bull, you have White Claw, you have Taiwan Semiconductor. I hear semiconductors use a lot of water. You have it coming, coming out with Intel. How do we be involved in that decision, but also talk about the economic development? I love manufacturing coming. I think manufacturing sticks with, with the, and I think manufacturing creates jobs that stick, that you were talking about. How do we get engaged in that process? But there's decisions made at different levels that basically it just looks like we're going to be the guys having to deal with the decisions of, of people because, I'll just say it, Glendale just has enticed a company to do a gigantic water park. So here we are telling people, be very conservative in your water usage, especially when we don't have it, and now for everyone to see, there's going to be just a great, huge water park. And a decision made by Glendale City Council members, that's, that's fine, that's on them, and they've got a wonderful entertainment district. But how are we going to be sitting there talking about conservation of water when in my own district, there's a beach now? So how do we plug into that, but in a way that's helpful to the county versus harmful to the people that are moving here?
That's a really good question, and it's something we've been thinking about because this is really one of those more holistic economic development items. We were doing some work for CAP recently, so we got, you know, updates on some of the water issues. I even had to read a water pricing book, textbook for a project we did a while back for reclaimed water sales to APS. So it's, it's, they were very tough reads, but they were complicated. I think in the long term, pricing will have to be part of the discussion. I mean, this is longer term, that'll take care of some of the consumptions. I think we need better technologies on the agriculture side. Here's what I would love to see, and so, put the Birkenstocks back on. I would like to see, and this is something we've been talking about with like, you know, Steve Zolstra and some other leaders in tech, love to see this environmental tech issue where it doesn't just have to be dealing with something like slow, solar, but it can also be if, what if Arizona and the county are the leaders in designing and doing the R&amp;D on advanced issues that take care of some of these problems? So you know, there's some very advanced farming techniques, but it's expensive to get them in the ground. But if we can develop something where we have extra revenue coming in and we reinvest it in certain areas, then we can maybe have a positive ROI on some of that. We could have some test cases in the county where we do it as part of the test case, and the farmer is willing to maybe shift the way water is used so it doesn't maybe cost him something. So what I'm saying is that the water issue, you don't want to discourage economic development too much, and you don't want to maybe, you know, come down too hard with a hammer on some of the ones that use a lot of water. But I think that overall society as a whole is going to be going in that direction, so there'll be more pressure anyways. But if you all can take a lead on things like, what can we do to improve this? What kind of technologies are involved? What does it take to get an entire environmental tech sub-industri- What does it take to get an entire environmental tech sub-industry developed? And just for some real quick math, we found that if all, Arizona is actually behind the U.S. in the ratio of green jobs. There's actually a green job, literally called green job category at the BLS. If all Arizona did was catch up with the U.S. average, and we should be better than the U.S. average. If we caught up with the U.S. average, the state general fund would make an extra 250 million more every year. If we pass it to where we think we should be, that's an extra half a billion in revenue every year. So if we implement something, and that's our return, we should be able to spend some of that to get to there. But the difficulty is that whole bridge loan concept. What do you do when you have something that ramps up in fiscal benefits, and it's like that logarithmic curve, but you have to get through that initial four or five years? So there's lots of cool things going on, and I don't know if you still have the, some of the strategic plans like before where it dealt with economic development a little bit, but I think having some information by some of these sectors on things that are real, and then trying to figure out how you can, you know, divide up your labor into being a champion in certain areas, I think that'd be fantastic.
And, and Jim, you know, I, those, those things that tip over, you know, other, other apple carts, I think. You mentioned farming and some of the best, new best practices that are limited on water usage. That's, that's all, that's all well and good. I just go back to what, what that tipped over for me a couple of years ago. Supervisor Chukri and ASU and our IDA board were working together, and they came and brought some maps about the Heat Island. I still remember this. And the Heat Island is like, well, look at Phoenix, and it's glowing red, and what we need to do is get it a little more like this. And he pointed out in a map, and I looked at it, and I went, well, that's still fields in production in agriculture that doesn't have pavement and doesn't have buildings on it. They're still, because, well, this area now is providing a little cooling relief. And growing up here as a farm kid, yeah, it was, it was cooler in the summers. I played baseball in the summers, and it's because I played in baseball fields that were surrounded by cotton fields that were being irrigated. So it's, which way do we have to go here that needs to be studied and looked at a little more? I'm not saying just flood irrigate all of, all of Phoenix to get the temperature down, but that's what kind of cooled the temperature of Phoenix down. So I'm willing to get plugged in into that conversation, but, but I also don't want to be plugged in the conversation right when we tell people no. Hey, this is the time for you guys to tell no. You guys tell somebody no. You know, we've been able to make decisions for 20 years of getting really, you know, moneyed people to keep saying yes. But now you guys get to be the harbingers of the bad news, so.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, how about if we, so there's a lot of different things going on, plans for the next couple or three years on some of these holistic items. What if we get a little bit of a briefing to budget staff, and they can pass along to the chiefs? And then if you all, after you look at it, want to brainstorm or see what we would recommend, or if we want to have a Zoom meeting with, you know, three or four key people in an area that you're interested in, let's set that up. I mean, I know you have a lot of time constraints, but I think in this case, with these big items, it's always worthwhile.
It's good to be talking on the front end of this stuff, to show everybody that we identified problems, you know, at this level, than instead of getting to the point where we're fighting with somebody in the legislature about something.
Exactly. Yeah, and I'll just comment quickly that, and I think everyone already knows, that one of my big concerns about our economic growth is keeping up with infrastructure. And the infrastructure groups I've been involved in have now added water as part of our critical infrastructure. So that is being addressed. And just mentioning Intel, they, they're doing a phenomenal job at Intel on recycling their water. I believe they're above 95% recycled now, and their goal is to get to 100%. And they're doing a number of other things for water restoration in other parts of the state. So we need more of that kind of leadership. Supervisor Guyardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and these are always fascinating presentations. I'm not an expert, so I rely on folks like yourselves and others to kind of guide me, but these are always fascinating to see. One of the things I have not heard or seen, and I'm going to look at this one in particular, this is just the, the Arizona employment percentage wage, or change by wage groups, and you look at those that were hit the hardest, and of course, it's the segment of, of those that earn less than 40,000 and those that are in the 40, 60,000 range, which I would anticipate and guess are probably the largest group of employees in Arizona that were hit the hardest. One of the things, we talked about the principles of the economy and all that, one of the things that hasn't been brought up, and that is the, the causes of economic inequality. And you see it everywhere. My district is a perfect example. We talked about some of the challenges, housing, housing number one issue in my district right now. They just, they're priced out of renting, they're priced out of, I know what I pay, and, and I'm single. I have no dependents. I have a little dog, doesn't cost much. I can't see how a family of just two kids, or three kids, or four kids are, are surviving. And I know what I make, I know what the average folks in my district make, and there's no way. So you look at some of the challenges that are facing in my district, housing, food, access to the internet, education, healthcare, wage, jobs, transportation, the list goes on and on and on. Any thoughts on how we address? Because that, I know, I understand, that's not in Arizona, it's a global issue when you, when you talk about income inequality. It's just global, it's everywhere. But any thoughts, hasn't really, we identify some of the challenges in the presentation, but the underlying cost, if you have an overwhelming population that is making much less and able to, being able to even just live in a basic society.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I, what we're recommending right now is that these policy topics be broken into more digestible policy issues. And so, for example, we would break down the housing issue into what can we control and what can we not? And that's why I thought it would be fascinating to engage with the cities and others to try to figure out, is there something we can do that's not going to have as much of a cost? And then what is remaining, and what's the best use of the funds? In, in other cases, like poverty, one, we just typed that this past weekend, it's, lawmakers aren't going to fix poverty, but they can address the issues that poverty causes in education. And so that's where, on the education items, we're recommending that certain policy topics that might be on different groups legislative agendas, go through this rigor of analysis and go into the legislative session and say, we want to affect this guidance counselor issue, we want to affect, you know, another issue with dual enrollment being not fully taken advantage of, of those that have lower income. There are certain things that we can do that aren't going to have as big of a cost. But that chart that you saw where it showed the county and the golfer, we're not going to catch up to the U.S. by sticking with the, the status quo. We actually have to try to advance these things. The case studies where the questions about Idaho and Utah, those are the things where we have to see what other people are doing. So if we can break it down into topics, and we can discuss it this way, I'm going to be participating with the superintendents, with Diane Smith, who's one of the best people out there, at their event in a couple of weeks, all day, talking about what can we do. But we always like to remind people, how can we do it in a cost-effective way, because the taxpayer should benefit from this? So if the taxpayer benefits from it, and there's a positive ROI, that's like a business owner making a profit. Now, not everything can be done that way, acknowledge that, but if we do this, we get through to both sides of the aisle, and I've seen nothing get through when you only have maybe the far left or the far right, and you're lacking a major group like those in the middle or something. You never get something through that's of significance.
And I totally agree. I think this is, this is a much greater discussion. I wish I had the, the magic wand to address. I don't, I think we all wish we had a magic wand, but we don't. But I think it's important to really point out, I mean, we look at this chart, this one in particular, and you, we have five categories, less than 40, 40 to 60, 60, 80, 80 to 100, and those over 100. But if you actually put, let's put numbers, how many people fall in these categories? This category will be sky-high versus this one. It's not, and this is the group that was hurt the most over the last three years, is this, this group. And these are the folks, once again, we talk about a strong economy, you gotta, you gotta look at the entire apple here, and how do you address that? I don't know, but.
How about on that particular chart? Because we do have one that breaks it into $10,000 increments on income. And then we have some charts, this is only a small piece of our broader deck, where it talks about volume. We'll figure out a way of kind of putting them together, so you can kind of see, a simple way of putting them together, and then we'll send you that individual chart. But I, I, that is one where I do want to go back to the smaller increments in terms of the dollar amounts.
And Mr. Chairman, and thank you. It's, this is, this is, they're always fascinating, it really does fascinate me a lot. But Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I will throw out there is, number one issue facing Maricopa County is housing. I don't care, we can throw all the other issues out there. Housing, number one, touches every one of our districts, it does. You have families that, right now, I mean, they, I, you know, I don't know if there's another bubble coming that's ready to clap, I have no idea. I'm not, that's not my area of expertise. My area, my area of expertise is seeing families, unfortunately, that are struggling, and I see it all the time, and it's in all our districts. And how do we address that? Yeah, we can build homes like crazy, and we continue, it never, it never slowed down, which we all thought, at least I did. I thought that was going to come to a halt during the pandemic, housing was going to stop, it never did. But at the end of the day, we continue to have folks moving into the valley. The need for housing is, continues to increase, but even more so, the need for affordable housing. And how you address that, again, I wish I had a magic wand, but just to throw that out there.
Thanks, Supervisor. Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jim, sorry I'm not there with you in person, but I, I do have a few questions and some that really leapfrog off of the comments of some of my other colleagues. But if I can, start with this, Jim, first and foremost, when you, you spoke about early on in the presentation and through your charts, you're about the cost and the increased cost, let's take lumber in the construction industry, now I see that coming down. But you also hear the stories of people saying, these lumberhouses, well, hey, we paid, we paid top dollar, we're going to continue to pass that cost on until we rebound into today's cost, which is problematic for me. But I also wanted to ask you, what, at what point, isn't there a breaking point, economically speaking, that the consumer, at the end of the day, can't afford to continue to pay on the increased costs? We're seeing across multiple sectors, multiple sectors, not just restaurants and leisure, but also the home building industry, the retail community. Try and go and buy a refrigerator, you're probably six months out. I mean, it, it's touched everybody. And there has to be a breaking point, and I just wanted to ask you, is there a point in which time the consumer says, no more? I can't afford it. You heard what Mr. Guyardo said about wages. And therefore, it then creates a domino effect or a pushback effect. And we start to see sales across the retail sector and many other sectors decline. And then to piggyback with that, you mentioned automotive. Well, the chips issue across every major manufacturer, you drive down Camelback Road, all you see is empty lots, car lots. I, I just wonder, how is that going to impact the county? And it may not, we may not feel it today, but we're certainly going to feel it in two or three months when we see that vehicle license tax reduction, because you just can't buy the product. So it's kind of a two-pointed question, and I've got a couple more after that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukri. So the beauty of economics is that it'll work itself out longer term, most of the time, not all the time. And so picture, you have an uneven floor, and you dump a bucket of water on it. In a perfect world economics, the water would flow to the lowest point, and it would just be a smooth floor. Well, when you have these complications, like what we're going through now, it's like dumping a bucket of Jell-O, and you kind of got to press it into the different areas, so it's not quite as efficient as it normally would be. And so you end up with a lot of these breaking points, so to speak, but they all kind of interrelate. So once consumers, they won't just snap and say, I'm not going to buy anymore, they're going to slowly purchase less, which will reduce the demand. Hopefully, we'll have an increase in supply as the supplier networks continue to advance and recovery from, recover from COVID. We take care of any regulatory issues, so there's some public policy stuff we can do. But if we can kind of smooth out that Jell-O to be flat for the next couple of years, until the economy kind of gets back into balance and everything starts rolling like we're used to, that would be good. But I am concerned, I'm concerned about the wages issue, I'm concerned about a lot. One of my biggest concerns, and we've been the bad guy on minimum wage a little bit, but not because of what you would think, I was less pro raising the minimum wage, because I was pro increasing our economic development programs related to workforce training, actually asking why a disproportionate number of people in the workforce are, are leaving. It turns out that a lot of women that are participating in these particular programs, the workforce training programs, are having a difficult time with daycare. Okay, well, let's ask and say, why aren't you there? How can we fix that? Is it as simple as a bus pass? We have to get more dynamic. If we're going to maybe be opposed to, we just want minimum wage to be 30 bucks an hour, 15 bucks an hour, and we have to offer an alternative, and the alternative is to make it where you're not raising a family making that low wage. But right now, like with restaurants and others, this imbalance is going to hurt some businesses, and I expect additional businesses to go out of business in the next year. I don't think there'll be like a second wave, I just think it'll be heightened bankruptcy for a little while longer, until that water is flowing more evenly in a couple of years.
Got it. In relation to the vehicle sales, though, do you, do you impact, do you see an impact to the county budget? I, I know it's not a huge percentage of what we bring in economically, but it is an important part. Do you see that tapering down here, maybe in the next quarter or two?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I think that, so I think the forecast was a little less than three, it was like 2.3%. So we had a little bit of a conservative forecast, you're building off of a larger base, I think, in every tax category. But when you have really low interest rates, and you have that extra money flowing to those individuals that weren't losing their jobs, which is a lot of people that Mr. Guyardo brought up, you're going to have a situation where you sell extra cars. Used cars were in high demand, and those prices went up. None of that is lasting. This all gets back to, when things get messed up, it's imbalances in the economy, the government messing something up, whatever it might be, there's usually a shock. And then it just takes a little while for everything to get back to normal. There's just a little bit more risk going forward than what you've seen, and that's why, I don't know if I'm overstepping, but I think that even though you had a bigger basis last year, I'd still be a little bit cautious with the revenues.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. Rounds, and, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having him here this morning. And this is less of a question, more of a comment. I, I think, taking from what both Mr. Gates said earlier about the housing, as well as Mr. Guyardo, in the sense that I want to continue to be the fastest-growing county in America, but, but at the same time, there, there's compression issues when it comes to housing. And the more expensive we become, I could see it starting to decrease by way of being that fastest-growing county. So I'm hopeful that all these things sort themselves out. I, I believe that we're not going to see the employment factor recuperate to what we'd like to see more till mid-year 2022, the end of this year, but I'm hopeful it comes sooner. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you, Jim. Very, very good report. And I, I think we are all anxious for the county to be able to get back to working on some of these priorities a little more aggressively.
Will help, however we can. Take care.
Okay, the next agenda item is legislative update. Michelle, are you going to lead us on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor. Before Craig comes up to make his presentation, I just wanted to say a brief word about the past session, and update you as we continue our preparations for the upcoming 2022 legislative session. As you are well aware, the 2021 session was very unique for many reasons, and we would not have been as successful as we were without your support. I want to thank your offices, Joy, and county staff that continuously provided the technical expertise we rely on as we play defense on legislation targeting the county. I would also like to thank my team, Danny DeHogue, Trey Williams, and Celine Saccido for their support and hard work during the past year. As we look ahead to next session, please know that we did complete our annual department solicitation for 2022 legislative proposals, and are continuing to move those through our research and vetting process. We do not have anything for you to consider at this time, but we may before the next session begins in January. Government relations will continue to keep your offices appraised as we move through this process. As Craig is likely to mention, we will continue to fight along with PMA County and CSA against the cost shift from the Department of Juvenile Corrections to the county, and we'll also continue to engage in defense and stakeholder conversations on legislation that will impact us. Being mindful of your busy schedules, that's all I have for you today. I'm happy to take any questions and turn things over to Craig.
Any questions from Michelle from the board? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's great to see you here today. For the record, I'm Craig Sullivan. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to stand before you. you. The purpose of the presentation is really just to connect you with some of the activities of the County Supervisors Association. I know you have the materials in your packet. I won't cover it all, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And Mr. Chairman, before I begin, I just want to thank this board for its involvement in our association. I am so grateful for all the time and effort that you and your professional staff give our association. I know the 14 other counties are grateful that you're at the table and that you're providing leadership and technical expertise. And so I just want to share that with all of you. We really appreciate you all being involved. And in particular, I want to highlight some of the leadership that you have all brought to our table. Mr. Hickman, I can't believe it's been six years since you served as president of the association, but I want to share with you that you made the organization stronger and it continues to bear fruit to this day. And so I appreciate all the time that you gave us then. Thank you, Craig. And Supervisor Gallardo, I have to thank you for all the time you've given us as president over the last year and over the last several years on our executive committee. Not only did you help us navigate the COVID environment, but we have 23 new supervisors who are on our Board of Directors, fully a third of our Board of Directors are new. And Supervisor Gallardo has been setting the tone and the collaborative spirit among all of these new supervisors. And I want to thank you for that.
And I'm fixing all of Clint's problems.
That's right.
For the last six years.
Thanks for the help, Steve.
But you all bringing that kind of leadership to our association has made us so much more effective. And I'm, I really do appreciate it. I also want to extend my gratitude for your professional staff involvement. Manager Rich and Intergovernmental Director Michelle Heineman, I am so grateful for your presence in our managers' meetings and all of our professional staff meetings. We benefit mightily from the technical expertise you all bring. So thank you for that. Even if a lot of our managers' meetings are just going over things we all wish we weren't having to deal with. The PowerPoint itself breaks down a little bit about who we are, but some of our key strategic initiatives that we've been involved in, as well as a little bit about the last legislative session. So first, just for folks who aren't familiar with us, the County Supervisors Association is a nonpartisan collaboration of the 15 counties. And what we're working on are having conversations around making government, county government more efficient, more effective, developing information to improve decision-making across county government and at the state level, and serving as an intergovernmental office for all of the counties and to strengthen intergovernmental relations here as well. That becomes important, because as you know, there are many external factors and players who impact your operations and your authorities. And you know that all very well. Our leadership are the 61 supervisors, and we've been grateful to have Mr. Gallardo on our leadership chain for several years now and chairing our Legislative Policy Committee meeting. But I've been very pleased to see each of you participating in our regular meetings. And I want to extend my gratitude again for that. What I provided to you here is just a list of the speakers we've brought through our association over the last year, just to highlight that our desire is to bring relevant speakers to have a conversation about policy issues that intersect with county government. I also put on the right, lower right, the professional affiliate groups that we work with and provide support with, our Managers Association, Finance Directors, Planning Directors, those folks, they are critical at creating a 15-county collaboration on, to strengthen the association. And again, Maricopa has a heavy presence in this, and, and, and they make the whole effort better. Moving on to three strategic initiatives. The first I'd like to highlight for you is our data collection initiative. This is where we are developing time series data on county relevant facts to build out our county encyclopedia, our county revenue dashboard, and our county employment dashboard. And this is just to provide information to support our decision-making and our advocacy over at the state legislature. And this continues to build every year. I did provide in your packet some of the visualizations in the, in the encyclopedia, as well as the revenue dashboard and other items. I would encourage you to take a look at our website, where you can navigate these a little bit more. But I think it's a great value add for professional staff and supervisors alike. The next strategic initiative I'd like to talk about is the conversation about public safety pensions. Now, we have been involved in the reforms at the state capitol, along with the labor unions and the League of Cities and Towns for many years. Now, we are involved in three key things. One is helping support, building capacity among the counties about these pension systems and the debts that exist. Number two, working as a coalition to bring our voice to the PSPRS Board of Trustees to inform their decision-making. And we do that both through my service on the advisory committee, as well as through our appointee to the PSPRS Board of Trustees, Alan McGuire. And so that's something we need to stay engaged in. And then the third key item is just talking among counties about strategies to effectively control this debt. And by that, I mean finding strategies that will limit the long-term costs of repayment of the PSPRS Corp. and EYOR debt. And that's been an ongoing conversation that we've been round tabling among the managers and finance directors. And then the final strategic initiative is the COVID response. You all were a tip of the spear on the COVID response. We worked really as a facilitator among the counties to support the advocacy at the federal level, engagement with Treasury, the governor's office, as well as DHS. But I have to, I have to share with you that your professional staff's involvement with the conversation that we had with the other counties was immensely helpful, because they were very generous with their technical expertise and insights. And so that was very, very much appreciated by everybody as we went through that. So these have been three, you know, major strategic initiatives that we kept going on, on a parallel course. But of course, job one is to engage the legislature. So I want to talk a little bit about that to you. This legislative session went late, as you know, and very bizarrely, I stand before you today, where new laws have not yet gone into effect. Those are going to go into effect on September 29. And so those will all have to be implemented by county operations after that date. Let me talk a little bit about the state budget. What you see here on the left are the major spending items that the state put in its budget. Now, you know, it was a year where they had significant resources for various reasons on the table. What they did on the left is fund critical areas, that won't surprise you, education, DPS, corrections. But they also, very importantly, paid down a substantial amount of debt, some of which was repaying buildings that had been leveraged during the recession. But others were putting dollars, about a billion dollars, into the PSPRS and corp accounts, where they invested to help buy down that liability. And that was a substantial investment by the state, and I think good things that they put on, on the table. The second category are on the right, and this relates to the tax package. First, the property tax piece. This impacts counties, because we're heavily based on the property tax. But I wanted you to know that the state is phasing down the commercial assessment ratio from 18% ultimately to 16%. And what that means is there's a slow shift in the underlying property tax mix towards homeowners. Homeowners pay 10% as you know, on their assessment ratio. The state did attempt to dampen that impact by increasing what's called the homeowner's rebate. And so this is a policy that we've seen in the work for many years. And the legislature took its next step this year in the final tax package. And then secondly was the income tax piece, which Mr. Rounds knows very well, as he evaluated throughout the process. But the state did put in a very large income tax reduction that tries to get down to a flat tax if certain triggers comply. That is not so much a direct impact on the counties, but we do pay attention to what it might do to the ongoing sustainability of state revenues, because as you know, we're downhill from state policy when it comes to state cost shifts. This tax package is also being, there's an effort to refer it to the ballot. And if that's successful, then that can bring a little chaos into the system as well. And we'll know this, whether that succeeds here later in the month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Clint.
Hey, Craig, just because I, I kind of lost track of it. On the, on that, on the spending, on the $470 million sale leaseback payoff, that was to, to basically buy back state buildings, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
Was, do you, do you recall, was there a, a figure in there? Did, did it cost, was there like an opportunity cost or something that, that, or a penalty for repaying those early that went to the, that went to the holder of the note, basically? Would, do you, do you recall that? Or did they just pay off exactly what was owed up to that point?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor, I don't have an answer to that, but I can follow up with it.
Okay, because those buildings were paid beforehand, and then they, to, to plug a hole in their budget that swung open, that, that's why they did this lease thing with investors, right?
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct.
I'd like to know. I'd just like to know if that's, if that cost the taxpayer a little bit more money. It makes sense to, you know, it makes sense to keep the ownership of, of their, their own buildings they work in. But I just didn't know how that transaction played out.
Whether there were penalties or what. I'd be happy to look into that for you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
A little bit more about the budget, some major county touchpoints. Ms. Heineman mentioned the DJC fee. So again, we had a member, Mr. Wenninger, run a bill to try to permanently repeal the DJC fee that is charged to Maricopa and Pima Counties. That bill got out of the House. It ultimately did not get included in the budget. So it will be a priority for us, again, this coming year. What I was pleased with is that an opportunity did arise to eliminate county payments to the State Department of Revenue. Now, this is something that at the beginning was not on our radar, but as a window emerged, we were able to work with the cities and some key members to get ongoing relief as it relates to that. And so that will save Maricopa County about $2.4 million. There also were some major items in transportation. And I've got a couple of slides that I wanted to show you just to break that down. What's happened with transportation, right, is that the state wants to put one-time money into infrastructure. But what it's been doing is working within the majority caucus about specific projects that those majority caucus members want to include. And so that makes for a relatively inefficient allocation and doesn't really, and in many ways unfair, depending where folks are residing. But what you see here is how their breakdown was by county. They put $330 million into transportation. You can see the projects funded by county on the left. And they also earmarked about $90 million for preservation projects in the outlying areas that ADOT will deploy. And so that's how they went about it this year. And as you'll probably recall, they went about it that way in prior years as well. We have been advocating for more resources into the system. We have been identifying that transportation is under, underfunded in our state, that our HERF revenue systems are insufficient to generate the revenues to fund transportation in our state. But the legislature has taken the more expeditious and more transactional approach of just allocating one-time money. I also wanted to highlight broadband investment. It was a priority for the counties to advocate for more state resources to help support broadband infrastructure. Every one of our counties has broadband-related issues. We were pleased that Representative Osborne particularly picked up the mantle to ensure that about $140 million were squirreled away by the state to help fund a grant program and other support for underserved areas. And that includes underserved areas and rural areas in Maricopa County. We did see a special session where they focused on wildfire and flooding. Some of your colleague counties, Pinal, Hila, and Coconino, were called at the last minute to provide technical expertise into how to capitalize this fund. And I was really appreciated former Supervisor David Tenney, who's now the state forester. He really understands counties and was able to navigate what was a fairly meaningful package and got that secured in the budget. We ran a few bills, most of on our proactive advocacy side. Most of them, well, they were not driven by Maricopa or particularly important to Maricopa County. But of the four bills that we introduced into the session, two bills got to the finish line, and they are relevant to you. One is a small technical change to military leave pay, and the other one is the timetable for writing candidates. But a core function of what we do, and I know you know this well, is to just be positioned to deal with what we call reactive advocacy. And this is the hundreds of issues that come in that touch county operations. And this is where I cannot extend my appreciation enough to your intergovernmental team, because they are excellent partners with us in helping identify what the exposure points are, not just Maricopa County, but counties in general. And they are such important partners in this effort. But this year, it was a pretty good year at playing, in terms of playing defense. And I won't go through all the different items, but we had plenty of opportunity to defeat bills or improve bills through amendment processes. And Supervisor Gallardo, I really want to thank you for your role in this, because this was all about bringing folks of both political stripes together in one common forum to talk about what bills meant to county operations and coming up with a coalition approach. And you did an excellent job, never with any of your colleagues in the room, but I just want to extend my appreciation to you for that, because I'm sure it was not easy.
Yeah.
And just moving forward, you know, we begin preparing for the next session as soon as one ends. And so we have been trying to get organized for our next legislative session. We're holding what we call our Legislative Summit at the end of this month, the end of September. So it's a little early this year. I'd love to have you all at the table. We're going to talk about some key issues coming up in the next session. But I think, just as importantly, build the, the coalition among counties. Many of us have not met a lot of these new people. And so we really want to build our team and build that esprit de corps as we work towards the next legislative session. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you again for your great partnership with our association. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, first, Greg, thank you so much for your work on behalf and really being our, our quarterback there at CSA and, and just the entire staff and how professional you all work. And you all do a lot for a very small staff here. It's not a very large staff, very small staff, but you all accomplished a lot of work. This was, this was a legislative session that was full of challenges, mostly because of COVID and a lot of the mitigations. I mean, I've been down there, so, so excited for the legislative session. I know what, think I have an idea of what we need to do to advocate for our causes. But having to do everything by phone, I'm, I'm used to just jumping from knocking on doors, hey, let's sit down and talk, and let's talk about this. We couldn't do it that way. We had to do everything by Zoom and by calls and, and it's, and emails. And that made it much more challenging. But nonetheless, you have a group of supervisors from across the state, or across the, yeah, across the state, that really are very passionate about their communities. Every community is different. I mean, I think I've learned more over the last year than I ever would have. I'm so used to just Maricopa County and the Maricopa County causes and issues. But you go down to some of these smaller counties, and it's a whole different world and different priorities. And to be able to sit down and work with everyone and trying to come up with some consensus and, and trying to understand some of their needs, I think, was, was, was a wonderful experience. But nonetheless, Craig, I think the staff there at CSA really should be commended and just great staff. I've been involved in a lot of different organizations, but I think CSA stands above all of them. Just professionalism, just, just hardworking folks. And it's not a large staff. I tell folks, they don't, it's like they have a monster group of folks there. They have a small staff and they do wonderful work. So thank you, Craig, for the work.
Supervisor Hickman.
Yeah, Craig, thank you. I wanted to give my thanks to you, too. I enjoyed working with you six years ago. We had, had a great time doing it. And I, I had it really easy. You, we were able to introduce, you know, really find out, going to their, the other supervisors' communities and getting a chance to meet them. And it made that job as being a president so much easier, because you could really get a lay of the land, what their issues were, especially on the rural side. But I, I just wanted to take the opportunity. So thank you for your staff and, and how well you guys do with our team as well. But I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Steve. He did a, you did a great, a great job. This is, you know, doing a leadership role like this, the ultimate leader during a pandemic, you know, and, and having to lose that ability to be, you know, present with others, to have to do these types of things and leadership through Zoom calls and trying to get the same information out to people expecting somehow a Zoom call is going to get that feeling. You just did a great job, Steve. And I, I couldn't have been more happy to put a vote in for you all the way up to get to, to this point. Look forward to being with you at, in Prescott. And again, I know how much time you took and how seriously you took it. And it was a really nice thing to see you provide that leadership to all the counties. So So, thanks, thanks for your hard work on that, Steve. Yeah.
Thank you, Clint. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just briefly, wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues. Craig, thanks for the great work that you do with CSA. You know, over the years, I've been affiliated with the League and then with CSA and other organizations, and I mean, your group is just so well-regarded across the entire political spectrum, and I think that speaks a lot to your leadership and, and also the leadership of the current president, and Steve, thanks for representing Maricopa County so well out there. I mean, that's big on the heels of Clint, serving in that role really gives the county that much more cachet, so. And I know we don't always make it easy for you out there at the legislature, so, so we really do appreciate the great work you've done in the last year and before that as well. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not to sound like a broken record, Greg, but you are a true professional. You know that. I've always thought highly of you and continue to, because of the great work you do, as evidenced through this presentation today. I also, Mr. Chairman, want to thank Michelle for all of her hard work in keeping, keeping everything together the best she could, given all the ancillary issues we're facing. One particular big one, not to mention COVID and everything else, so between the two of them, we're incredibly well-represented. I also, Mr. Chairman, thought it might be appropriate to take this time to see if we could do a side-by-side comparison of Mr. Hickman's presidency to that of Mr. Gallardo's presidency, as well as if it's appropriate to, Craig, to have this kind of be a staff review of the presidency of Mr. Gallardo. Well, you've got time on the calendar.
So, Craig, who was?
Who wants to start?
Mr. Chairman, the only, the only thing I can say is that the one measurable we have is there were fewer cases of flu and flu-like symptoms during Mr. Hickman's tenure. Very good. Nice answer.
Well, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Hickman hit every county, which I think is, is a great thing. All kidding aside, Steve and I spoke about his leadership role in this a few years ago, and I think it, there couldn't have been a better choice, especially right now, and someone who really understands what a community needs, you'll find in Steve Gallardo. So, Steve, thank you for that, and I know it's not easy. You've got plenty of things to, to juggle, and you do so well. So, thank you, all kidding aside, and thank you again, Craig.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, and I will just reiterate what all my other colleagues have said. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Steve. But also, you know, I, before I became a county supervisor, I traveled all over the state with the State Transportation Board, and the thing that, that I was reminded of when I started attending your meetings is that as you go across the state, the real leaders are the county supervisors. Everywhere I went, it was the county supervisors that were involved with the State Transportation Board, that were looking out for their communities, and I have to tell you that your reputation statewide is, is highly regarded, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think that concludes this item. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We will now proceed to executive session. Thank you.